Welcome to the Callexico City Council, Callexico Redevelopment Successor Agency, Callexico Finance Authority Planning Commission Special Meeting. Meeting is now in session, called to order at 2:08 PM. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Noricumbo.
Present.
Mayor Protem Legaspi.
Present.
Councilmember Thailanda is absent. Councilmember Marquez.
Present.
Councilmember Calderon.
Here.
We have call.
Okay, thank you. Can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion?
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Thailanda is absent. Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Yes, correct.
All right. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any public comment? Or are you gonna read it first?
This time, place for the legislature that City Council on special agenda items only. The city clerk recognize you, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and place of residence for the record. While members of the public are encouraged to participate, it is unlawful to disturb or delay the council meetings with personal slanderous remarks. The City Council prohibited by law from taking action or discussing items not included in the present agenda. Please direct your questions and comments to the City Council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have public comment?
Yes, we do. First speaker is Julio Rocha.
Good afternoon, council and staff. How are you doing today? I've got two questions to address to the council. First of all, number one is, we don't see no financial report every month as a public record. Second of all, the budget, once again, it needs to be more clear so we can understand, as commission, understand, you know, what are we, or, you know, advising to the council to approve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Richard Tremedo.
Honorable council and staff, my name is Richard Tremedo, 806 Ward Court. Let's make a quick comment. Madam Mayor, I read the article today about the budget, and you are correct. The enterprise fund should not be funded by the general fund. If the airport is losing money for the past three years, that's incredible. Get rid of it or raise the fees. You have no other option. The general fund is meant to support public safety, parks and recreation, but it's not meant to support the enterprise fund, the airport. Raise the fees or get rid of it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can you guys please speak into the microphone so Mr. Calderon can hear you. Next speaker is Victor Rocha.
Good afternoon. First thing I wanted to say, this is a question to the city attorney. Mr. City Attorney, does Mr. Victor Legaspi have a conflict of interest on voting on an issue that, a document that involves his wife?
Public comment in the council. I can answer that.
Okay.
Well?
Well, continue because of your time and then he'll answer.
I think he needs to give us an answer now because that determines if he's gonna participate. Otherwise, he's sitting there participating in something that he has a conflict. So, he needs to reclusive himself.
Recommend, maybe, answers no, but if you can state your public comment and then afterwards you can respond.
He does, he does not have a conflict of interest?
No.
Not according to the Fair Political Practice Commission.
Okay, sir, please continue.
My other point, the other point is, it has to do with the kids, the parks. I urge you to finalize the issue with the Cordova Park. I know it's not part of the agenda, but I want it for maybe so it can be agendized. You guys have to make a decision on it. I hear you wanna spend more money on engineering, and that's gonna further your cause. It's already demonstrated that your staff has not provided you with any documents saying that what they did, building out there, follow all the procedures that are required under CEQA guidelines. So, don't spend more money. Take the bull by the horns, make a decision, either approve it or deny it. But that needs to be resolved, no one's using it. It wasn't used for the entire season because you had a city manager who didn't know what he was doing as well.
Mr. Rocha, can you make it applicable to the budget?
Well?
Your comment?
I'm gonna make the comments when it comes to the budget itself. Or it's, do you want me to make them now?
No, I thought for public comment, since it's a special meeting, it's only budget discussion, correct?
Correct. For special meetings, you can only comment on the actual agenda.
Well, I thought it was general comments. So, I'm also included myself on, well, let me ask the question then.
Well, let's do this. If you wanna speak on the budget, so, make it clear to everyone now that this is a special meeting, and any comment right, that we're taking right now has to do with the budget. So, I'll give you, I'll give you two minutes. You spoke about one minute on the budget, and the other part, I didn't let people know, so I'll give you two minutes.
Okay. The question on the budget is, you're allocating money from the enterprise fund to the general fund. You're subsidizing it. That's against the law. You've been doing it for years. You've been charging in the $1 million two years ago as administrative cost. Please, there should be resolutions to approve it. So, if you guys can present the documents that allow you to do that. Because as far as I, all my, the research that I've done indicates that the maximum you could have allocated was $200,000. But remember, the enterprise shouldn't be charged anything because they're supposed to be run as a business. So, you should be having all the staff that is required to run it and not charge anything extra. They either go there and work there, otherwise, you can't do that. And my final, because it's part of the comment, is you guys are allowed to charge administrative costs to projects federal and state. You're not collecting them. You're losing money. You got over $17 million in debt on all the loans that have been given out since 1996. In the tune of 17 mil, 10 million is from the redevelopment agency, and you got over $10 million on people that have not paid the city because no one's collecting it. You're losing, you have the money, all you need to do is collect it. People are getting paid good chunks of money. You have a city manager, just direct them because, what I heard last time, you couldn't ask your finance director anything, so have him answer all your questions.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is June Kim.
Hi. First of all, I'm gonna give you the grade of the, you guys' budget, just E, because you got so many, so many quantity of the papers, so I'll give you little point. Today, you guys only one sheet of the paper saying you're gonna approve the budget. One sheet of paper. And this one is only for the, and the watching of the paper is they have questionable hidden amount of money. $50 million from the water bond. You guys done only spent $2.5 million. And where is the money? I don't see it here. I know the $50 million does not belongs to, or decided by you guys, but as a city connection we did it. They still hiding money. This one money in the bank, and whoever wants to pull out the money, they send the bank, so their bank can leave the money. So, we don't know how much is. But what I know, what I have information from the city, only you guys spent $2.5 million. Where is the waste money? We don't see it here. And beside that, at the first page, they're saying, together, water and wastewater, $61 million capital improvement money's there. The next page, you guys saying only about $45 million. So, where is, why you guys changing the number? Where you guys hiding number around? 2018, I was successfully pulled out the money. That time, $40 million city of Callexico had the capital improvement budget, but city insisted issued the bond $50 million more. It's wrong number, complete of each other. I see the, some point of the, several years ago, they have a copy and paste it, so they forget to correct the number of the year. Those kind of, but we have here, but then in here. Some council member was mentioning the day, the employees of the heart to get, make this one, and two days is not fair for them. They had bunch of the time, whole years. The computer, they have all form there, they, the input, they coming to the, all the pages different here. The what I see this one, somebody in, manually intervening between the transfer of money both side, so they changing the number round. You guys need to have a, have from the staff, how they expended, where's the money, they propose more detail.
Thank you, sir.
Without the detail, you should not accept that. Of course, we, you guys can say.
Thank you, sir.
We're gonna run for, we're gonna spend money like you used to, to make the, what they call the, preventing the shut the business. But you guys has to be doing your duty for the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. No more comments. Okay. We move on to the discussion and potential action items. Annual budget resolution for fiscal year July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, the presentation is the same as it was last time. What's presented in front of you is two choices. The budget without the increase in the water rates, or just without the increase, but in which case, we would have to encumber the revenue loss of about 300 and change that we would have to defer in salaries. So, before you, it's to approve the budget with or without the proposed water rate increases. Of course, if we were to go with the water rate increases, still has to go before the City Council. We still have to do all the process that we would have to, to approve a water rate increase. So, just because we're saying water rate increase, ladies and gentlemen, please don't take that as that's what's gonna happen. Obviously, we still have to follow the rules and regs. Also, also keep in mind, ladies and gentlemen, that tomorrow is July 1st, and we have to make our insurance payments, our liability insurance payments, and also our CalPERS payments, those are due tomorrow. So, without an approved budget, we cannot make that payment. And right now, we are going through a, an audit from the state that we're working on trying to get ourselves out of the, where we're at, we're being looked at as being a risk, and so we're in the process of getting out, and we're no longer gonna be a risk. So, this would be a good move to go forward.
Okay. Mayor Protem Legaspi, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes. Like I said before, hi Carla, how you doing? Carla, or Chief Roscoe, I'll direct it to you. Obviously, if there's any changes that needs to be made, any amendments that needs to be made, that could be done with the approval of this budget, correct?
Correct. This budget is a living document. These are just projections of revenue that we feel we're gonna bring in in the next coming year. Obviously, taxes, common change, that either we'll get more taxes, less taxes, but then we are going to be able to adjust our budget with City Council approval. So, these are just estimations of what we feel we're gonna bring in this coming up year, and what we're gonna spend. Because we never can foresee any kind of, any kind of events that could either raise or decrease our budget, you know, a disaster, you know, or maybe we bring in more taxes, in which case, we would adjust the budget accordingly.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Thailanda?
I appreciate staff.
Excuse me. Councilmember can't hear. So, if we can put him where, speaker or something?
Yeah, that's the speaker right there. So, does it work? Okay. I'm sorry, continue.
With the two options, I do believe that the option that does not include the proposed water rate is the better option, it's the more conservative approach. I don't feel comfortable with the budget that does assume the water rate increase because that's kinda like a precursor that we're in favor of, oh, thank you, sorry, of increasing the water rate. That's all, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Marquez?
Well, first off, I just wanted to go ahead and answer some of the questions of why some of us didn't have questions before on the prior meeting, and that's because we usually attend budget reviews, and it's during that time that we get these questions answered. And that's why a lot of other people had questions in regards to that. I feel that we need to keep it on there. Once again, this is a forecast. I'm sorry?
What? No, what's your question?
No, I was, I heard you say something, sorry.
No, I didn't say.
So, a forecast, that's what it is. And like you said, it's a, it's a document that can be amended, it can be changed. Before starting anything, I think we need to take in consideration all the penalties we have due to the inefficiency of running our wastewater treatment plant. We have $30 million to repair. However, back two years ago, we were missing 25 million. At this point, I believe it's more than that. And these are just repairs to the infrastructure. It does not give us money for operational cost or any settlements that we have by the state. We have two violations as of today. We also have, and I don't know if we've ever talked about this before, but because of the violations that we had back in 2020, we have to pay 1,000 residents the reconnection fees, disconnection fees, late fees, and $130 for each of them, and I don't think that we have yet to met that, to meet that. On top of that, we have a violation with the state. It was $4 million. It has been worked out, but we still haven't repaid that. So, because of all these things, and just the fact that we don't have the cost of operations calculated, we don't have the settlements agreed upon, and we haven't worked on any of these things, we can, right now, be in a lot of trouble, and I think that's why we need to keep it on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Calderon?
Yes, do you have any, any comments?
Oh, yeah, sure. Thank you for taking my call, and good evening, Callexicos. Yeah, I do have some comments to make regarding to today's agenda. First, I just wanna say that thank you for those who provided comments. I feel that all of you had valid comments. But before we start, I just wanna tell you that we were sworn in six months ago. Matter of fact, it was 12:12:24. When we inherited this, inherited this city, we had numerous vital positions that were vacant. For example, we didn't have a city manager, we didn't have a fire chief, we didn't have a public work director, we didn't have a city engineer, we didn't have a planning director, a finance director, and a resource manager. Today, as we speak, we have hired four out of the seven positions which are critical in running the normal operation of our city. Because of these vacancy positions, some of our staff had to wear several hats. For example, our finance director, when she was hired as a finance director, she had to be our HR director. She took many tasks and many of the grievances that had been filed over the past years because of lax management. She currently has dealt with three audits that were delinquent and required immediate attention. One of these audits dealt with CalPERS delinquent matters. The audit has been, has been completed as according to CalPERS demands. It is not a secret that Callexico, it is, it is a high-risk city due to it facing significant risks related to its financial and operational management. For many years, prior City Council approved spending despite of indicators that the city budget could not budget could not support. For example, the city general fund was in deficit from fiscal years 2014 to 2015 through 2018 and 2019. In spite of these mentioned downfalls, the city, I believe, now has a plan to put forward, collect go forward, and develop a robust accessible budget process. Our prior city manager developed a capital improvement plan of 120 million to 160 million on 60 infrastructure projects over the next three to five years. These projects were paused in our last city meeting. Because these projects are grant-driven, this council must act on it as soon as possible. I am in I am in favor of approving the city budget today as written. Ms. Chaparro has the experience to produce a balanced budget. Furthermore, Mr. Daniels and Ms. Susan Myers assisted Ms. Chaparro in creating and finalizing this budget that is before you today. Ms. Myers has been working on the Colexico city budget for approximately 10 to 11 years. If you add all three of them together, this is over 100 years of municipal experience. And like Ms. Marcus said, this budget is a working document. It can be amended if needed. My recognition, however, there are several recommendations for from directors out there that want to add staff. I can, I have to say that if these positions are not grant-driven, we should pause on them until we can look at items such as the airport and other items that have come up today. We also have three unions that we actively have negotiations with. So until we able to settle some of these negotiations, we cannot afford to stop our As I mentioned, I motion to approve this budget as it's written. And that is my motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Calderon. We're not doing motions yet. We're still having a discussion. But I'll ask for a motion as soon as we're done. I had a quick question. I was looking for something I read yesterday, but on the budget, but it was my, it was on my computer, so I don't have it here. I saw something that there was a line item for asylum center. And that's why I remember, because we don't have the asylum center, and and now, you know, with what's going on, we're not doing that. I don't know, maybe it was funding from the feds that was coming down?
Yeah, that was funding that was allocated with ARPA. So it was a project that was allocated to be supported by ARPA funds.
I can't find it, that's what I was looking for. I'm sorry, what? I'm sorry.
Just that it was an item that, a project that was funded by ARPA funds.
Okay, so can that money go back since we're not doing it anymore?
Yes, and actually, the previous city manager and myself had discussed doing a analysis of ARPA, and there's some projects that there's not enough time, like, for example, that one, there's not enough time to build it, because everything has to be spent before December 31, 2026. So doing like an analysis and reallocating funds that have not been used and are not gonna be used, so that we can use them in other places that are needed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do you guys need to say something again so we can? Okay, so I'm just gonna say, so that was my question. And then, also, what you mentioned, Chief, my biggest concern was the water rate. I didn't, I still don't feel that it needs to be on it, because we need to be conservative with these type of budgets. And that's not, to me, that's not being conservative, because we're assuming that we're gonna increase a fee that we haven't agreed to do, and that I personally said I wasn't gonna do. So that was my concern. The only thing, if you're gonna defer with staffing, I would request that you don't do it with safety staff. So wherever you guys could do it from, but I wouldn't, you know, like you to defer it with fire or PD. And then, I had something else, but I'll go around again. Do you wanna give a chance? We got new comments?
Yes.
So we'll listen to new comments, and then we'll go again. Supervisor Escobar?
Staff, apologize for not wearing a suit, but it's 110 outside, so I'm avoiding the When you look at local, be it city of Colexico, county of Imperial, when you look at local budgets, there's only so much you can cut. General fund is mostly based on staffing and salaries. We all know that. You guys got a crash course in this, obviously, because you're looking at a specific budget. The important thing, and the message I want to relay to you, and the message that we work at the county of Imperial, is there's only so much you can cut. There's only so much you can do when it comes to working with the expense portion of a budget, because there's a very limited amount of flexibility that you have. Are you gonna get staffing? Are you gonna come to some an agreement with some of the unions? I mean, we already stressed from a public safety perspective, be it fire, police, look at the park staffing that was 15 years ago, double digits versus now, I believe you have two people, I might be wrong, but I believe you have two people for parks, I might be wrong. The point I'm trying to make is, we focus a lot as elected officials on the expense portion of it, and we don't focus on the revenue portion of it. It might be grants, it might be servicing the business aspects of how we deliver business to small businesses that, at the end of the day, create taxes for a city, that provide customer service, that brings a trickle-down effect when it comes to economics, to fiscal, instead of deficit fiscal revenue. So my suggestion to you is, anytime you look at a budget, always, always, always look at the revenue streams that you have, or lack thereof, and how you can augment, even by 1%. 1% of 20 million is 200,000. That covers two police officers, one and one, whatever it might be. Always look at the revenue streams. Again, it's not rocket science, but again, sometimes we just focus on the expense side, and we don't focus on the revenue side. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any more comments? Okay. Mayor Portomagaski?
Roscoe, just to confirm on the water rates, it's to, whatever is voted on, if it's voted, it's not that we're gonna go straight towards the cut or addition of the water rates, it's just that can be amended as confirmed, correct?
Correct. If you vote with for the budget with the water rate increase, all that means is that staff will start working on the process of raising the rates. But even then, it still goes before council, and they'll have the right to approve it or reject those that proposal.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Thailanda?
We have another public comment.
Okay. I had already given you the two additional minutes for that comment.
Well, this is for the budget. I told you that I had specifically questions regarding the budget. The other ones were just comments, and I think they need to be answered. I think you need to know.
Okay.
Okay, because if you notice, you have someone presenting himself here.
I mean, I'm gonna allow it, because if not, why would we ask for public comments? Anyway, I mean, if if it was about it in public comments, and now he's in discussion.
But it does, it does state for agenda items only.
Madam?
Public comments? Yeah. I think, in all, in all fairness, I think if I allow you, I would have to allow everybody else.
I think you needed to know this, because if you're accounting for expenditures, I mean, revenue from the water, you should be accounting then for all the expenses as it relates to increases to the employees. You have not even taken that in consideration.
Okay, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, yeah. I would have to allow everybody else to speak, if I allowed you to speak, I'm sorry. Okay. Any other public comment?
So a couple things. The budget from last year included the supposed water rate increase, which we also expressed discontent with it. Either whether you do a budget amendment, then in the future or now, it's not a transparent process. If the ugly truth is that we're in a deficit, that's what the people want. You can go to all the agenda briefings, but the people wanna hear the questions here. That's why they come, and at home. So this is a place to ask questions, because they're not in those briefings. Nonetheless, I don't think that adopting a, and I don't like the term balanced budget, because there's so many factors, manipulating the numbers, like including the supposed water rate increase, that's why we're not in a 300 and some dollar deficit. So whether we adopt a budget now that shows a deficit, and then we make budget amendments to either free staff or move around money, it's it's the same thing. I don't think that it's conservative or transparent to adopt a budget with an increase that's assumed that we don't know what's going to happen, because then we're spending time, money, and hours, and we're making staff go through a Prop 218 process that we don't even know if it's gonna get approved, so that we can have a balanced budget. So whatever it is, I'm not here to inflate numbers for our constituents, I just wanna, I wanna know where we're at, truly. It's 144 pages, and it's nothing on staff, because you guys got this, you inherit this, you get direction from a city manager, and with so many changes and so many different directions, this is part of it. We have millions of dollars of unfunded liabilities. We are self-insured. We lost our JPIA insurance years ago, and if we have someone who dies of a heart attack or needs a heart transplant, sorry, we have to pay for that. And where are we gonna get the money then? So if we already adopt a budget that's inflated, and then something like that unexpected comes, we have to take it from who knows where, right? And all that is a factor. And I'm just saying, I don't feel that it's a transparent or conservative approach to adopting a budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Marcus?
So I guess this is a question for Lily. Do you do you think that you could give us the amount that we have right now to repair our wastewater treatment plant?
So back in, I wanna say, 2018, 2019, around that area before the COVID hit, the city had done a feasibility study as to how much it would cost the city to upgrade our plant with the existing infrastructure or make it all brand-new. Back then, plants were developed, they're about two to three years old, and the cost was the $15 million. Because we don't have enough funding, we have not been able to proceed with that project, as well as we also have a project that will upgrade sewer lines, water lines, starting from city right-of-way on Ollie, Bernardo Court, Scaroni Road, and then also some lift stations. That's also, plans have been developed, they're ready to go, of course, they're like about a year, two years, and that's another $14 million. So you are looking into $64 million worth of infrastructure projects that unfortunately we don't have. So there's wastewater.
So there's no funding for it at this point?
Right now, we do have a bond, I believe it's 25, if not mistaken, but I cannot proceed in a $50 million project when I only have half of the funding available.
Okay, thank you.
Lily, how much more would the rate go? Approximately, how much more would the rate go?
Well, the rates, well, I mean, the rates, of course, again, everything has increased, so it would be up to our financial service advisor to advise us how much we can go. I mean, last time, I think we came before council, there was like a maybe a 10% increase, but again, maybe council can review that and say, you know, 10% is not too much, maybe we can, you know, lower it, but extend the years to add the rate. I mean, there's several options that, you know, we can advise our financial advisor once it's selected, because I believe we have to go again through the process of getting a financial advisor to help us with the water and wastewater rates.
And the rates have been increasing throughout California?
They've been increasing everywhere, even here in the Imperial Valley. Actually, the general manager from Heber Utility contacted me a few months ago, wanting to know our process, because I believe they're also looking into it. It's my understanding also that the city of El Centro is also looking into water and wastewater rates. So it's everybody, not only in the Imperial Valley, but nationwide that are going through the process.
I believe El Centro would cost a bit more.
Yes.
If I may, Mayor, can I ask?
Yes.
I don't know if you wanna stay there, Ms. Lily, but there's a lot of options, right? Not just raising the rates, but even with city manager, there's other options that could be presented, if there's grant opportunities, or even privatizing the water and wastewater, so we wouldn't have to raise rates, and you could have a company come and provide, you know, the best infrastructure, however they wanna invest, there's other options, right, besides raising the rates? Yeah. And they looked into, if anyone remembers in like 2018, privatizing, I think I saw? How did that go? I wasn't here.
I wasn't involved, but my understanding is that our former city manager, David Dell, looked into it. He did a RFP, and then they got proposals. From my understanding, it was much higher than the budget that we had, so that way, that's why they didn't proceed. But again, I mean, it's just hearsay, I don't have the documentation.
Yeah, me neither. But, okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to confirm, we're not here to vote on raising water rates, so it's just a discussion on what could happen in the near future, with the pros and cons?
I do wanna say that, I wanna clarify that when you look at the budget for water operations and wastewater operations, there is, like I said on last Tuesday, there's two scenarios. So one scenario is without any rate increases, it's with the current rates. So I know that there's like the concern of like the inflation of numbers, but if you were to look, this is just, you know, in case, you know, you do increase the rates, this is more or less what it will look like. But then you also have the scenario that doesn't have any rate increases, and that's not an inflated number. So I just wanted to clarify that, because I know that by approving the the budget as is, you are approving either scenario. This is just, you know, to give an idea to, you know, everyone of how it would look like if you were to, you know, approve a rate increase. And I just wanna make the clarification.
I do then have a question. So based on what city manager said, it shows that scenario where there's a 300 and some thousand deficit there, and how is that proposed if to be mitigated?
That's where I discuss the salary savings. There's a salary vacancy assumption, and and I went into explaining that this fiscal year and fiscal year 2025, we actually made a conscious effort to not hire, once we saw that, you know, we were not gonna make the debt service ratio. And so Lily held off on hiring, because that was the only, that's the only expense where we have control over, right? Everything else, I might say, you know, supply services, contracts, we have to pay, we don't have an option, but we can hold off on hiring, and that reduces her budgeted salary, you know, benefits. So then, that's what we did this fiscal year. And and like I said, next fiscal year, let's say there's no rate increase, then we're gonna have to do the same again, we're gonna have to hold off on hiring or filling vacancies.
Okay, I have another question. So for CalPERS, there, I know that when the market crashed in 2010, other cities from their retirees, certain retirees, they ended their, what they would contribute to it? Is that something that we could look at?
Social Security, the Social Security contribution?
No, because there's Social Security in CalPERS. No, because there's Social Security and Calpers, but I guess if we could look at both and see what savings that would create in the budget. And also, the, so it's the Social Security, the Calpers, and, oh yeah, that's all.
Yeah, and actually, there was some discussions that I had with the previous interim city manager as well regarding Social Security, because that is a, because we, or the City of Clexico offers Calpers, like for example, the city of El Centro only has Calpers, they don't have Social Security. So, I had talked to the previous city manager and said, you know, this is something that we can look into, it's something that has to be negotiated, I'm sorry, I'm sure that it's a process that has to be also, you know, with the IRS, and so it has to be, it involves research and, you know, the implementation of it, I'm sure it's gonna be a huge project. But it is something that can save the city, you know, for, because it's a match, so it's six point two. So, it's a six point two for the employee, it's a six point two for the employer. So, that would mean that for every employee, the city would save six point two of their earnings.
Okay. Yeah, that would be interesting if we could get more information, city manager, and see our options, because at this point, I mean, there's a lot of things that we need and, you know, if we wanna continue to work towards providing better infrastructure, I think that's something that we need to look into. Also, city manager, if you could contact JPIA and see if they'll work with us to get our insurance back, because that has a big hit on our budget, right? Could you talk a little bit about that, like how it's impacting us not having JPIA and being self-insured? What does that cause?
So, pretty much anything that happens, so we have a fund balance, it's a self-funded fund, so we have a balance there. But pretty much what happens, any claim that comes into the city, if something happens, something huge happens, right, and the city needs to pay out funds, it would have to come out of that fund, and that fund is not, I guess if there was like an emergency or a huge crisis, it's not, it's not gonna be enough to sustain.
So, it's not healthy, right?
So, it's not, no. Whereas if you're insured, you know, you have CJPIA, you know, that's you pay an annual allocation and you're insured, you know, for different events or different issues that can happen.
Yeah. Do you know what year we lost it, Carlos or city manager?
It'd be twenty fifteen.
Oh, we lost it in twenty fifteen, wow, that's a long time. Okay, and do you know, Carlos, how we can work towards getting that and how it could help the budget? Can you talk about that?
Yeah, and actually, Maribel, new HR manager, we had already kinda discussed that, you know, trying to look into, or at least, you know, some communications with CJPIA to see if they would allow us to go back into that insurance.
Thank you for being proactive, that's awesome, that's great, we really need that. Thank you.
The city manager was Richard Law.
I'm sorry, sir, please don't speak from the audience.
Thank you.
Does council member Calderon have any additional comment?
Councilmember Calderon, do you have any additional?
The only comment I have is that we've only been in this seat for six months. I think we have progressed and advanced to get all these problems taken care of. It just, it takes time. We can't just fix every problem overnight, so it's gonna take a team effort to get the city back and out of this deficit. So, with that said, I'd like to motion to approve this budget as it's written.
Thank you, but we're not, we're not there yet, council member Calderon. Okay, so I had a question. Chief, when do you expect to have the actual numbers for the twenty-four, twenty-five, so that we know if we have a surplus or a deficit?
Finance would be able to answer that.
It takes approximately two to three months to close the fiscal year, because we allow departments to still submit expenditures. So, we allow them July, August, and half of September, and then we have to, at that point, we'll have a better idea of how we're closing the fiscal year, and then we have to close the fiscal year. So, I would say September.
Okay, thank you. I just have one ask, because like I said, of all the different, you know, concerns that we've had on the budget, and I understand all the time and the staffing, but, you know, still, I believe that, you know, the budget should not be something that we just put together, approve, and then just kinda mess with it. It's kind of our plan, it's our, you know, in the private sector, it's a business plan. This is what we're gonna do with the money, this is where we're gonna invest. So, to me, it doesn't tell me anything other than just numbers. But, so, I've been told that the state is adjusting its own budget, forcing a sales tax decrease, and we're not, we're not looking into that. So, I would like to ask, my ask is that we utilize our finance commission, that every month, the finance commission comes to the council under their commissioner reports and lets us know how we're doing on a monthly basis, if we're staying on track. So, I would ask that, that those meetings start now in July, and that finance gives them all the documentation that they need in a timely manner, so that they can study it before they come to the meetings, and then they can come to us and let us know what's going on.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Let me go back in order, do you have anything else? Okay. Councilmember Thailand.
City manager, I do have an ask. The, in the, today's town hall meeting for the parking meters, how much do we anticipate that coming in later, like being restarted, the collection of that? That'll be in the first quarter amendment, if it gets done in the next few months, like to show that we're getting money in?
So, that's gonna be an unusual ask at this point, because.
Oh, no, just a question.
No, 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 I'm, so, because now we're implementing credit card usage, obviously, now we're dealing with credit card fees, transaction fees, something that we haven't used before in the past, so we don't know what the revenue is gonna be. I'll give you a perfect example, if someone parks for thirty minutes and it's fifty cents, and we're paying forty-five cents for a credit card fee plus a thirteen cent transaction fee, we're gonna be in the negative for the half an hour. If we, an hour, then we're making fifty cents. So, it's, we're gonna have to, it's gonna be on a six-month probation, and then we'll look at it at six months, and then in one year to adjust the prices, so that way we're.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay. So, they're not, we're not gonna have a proposed, like, increase?
So, we, so we, what we did is we proposed a conservative amount, so that way, we're not overestimating what we're gonna bring in.
Okay. So, if you look at page twenty-five, you'll see it towards the bottom, parking meter lots. So, we were collecting in fiscal year twenty-two, two seventy-three, two seventy-two, two ninety-one, and then in this current fiscal year, our projection is one eighteen, because that's when they were stopped. And we knew that we had to be conservative, it is a project that is being worked on, but we also have to be conservative because we don't have the exact date. So, we, our budgeted amount is not, our proposed budget is not what it was before, because we don't know yet, but it's up to two forty. So, it used to be in the two seventies, two nineties, but now it's two forty, and that's giving it room to readjust itself.
Okay. And my other question is, if we move forward with approving the budget, if, you know, whoever, if you stay as city manager, whoever comes in as city manager, if we could, later on, once everything, you know, comes down, if we could get that presentation for the airport with options and ideas.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Yeah, there's, I know there's, there's a lot of ideas we could do if the direction is to keep it open or shut it down, but it's important that we get something out here so we can look at and the rest of the community can see.
Yeah, and I'd just like to let the council know that with Mr. Daniels, we have been working with prospective airport developers who wanna build Ingers. And so, from a planning point of view, maybe an airport master plan or something of that nature that could help get the airport into a positive.
Yeah, I, so I like that idea, obviously, we want, we always want growth and development, except that takes time, right? But something in the meantime, what we can do, so thank you, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Councilmember Marcus?
So, I have a question in regards to, we talked about privatizing the water, do we know how long that would take?
I was given direction to start researching, but I also have to caution that it's a meet and confer, so it would have to go through the negotiations with the operators memorandum of understanding. So, I don't wanna say six months, it's a lengthy process, so it will take several months.
And once that would happen or go through, the rates are to go up, correct? Because it's a private company?
Yes, it all depends on the agreement that the city makes with the contractor who will be providing the services.
Okay, thank you. And then the next question, it's regarded in, in regards to the audit that we were working on. There was a recommendation for fee increase from the last audit. Can you please speak into, in regards to that?
Yes, because when that audit happened, we were in financial, the city was in financial distress. So, we were not bringing in, bringing in enough revenue to cover the expenditures, and that's when we had a deficit and all that was happening. So, they said you need to raise your revenue, because your expenditures, being that, for example, seventy-four percent of your budget is salary and benefits, and then the rest, you know, it doesn't give you a lot of wiggle room to work on, you know, everything else. So, then they said, what needs to happen is you need, you need to attempt to raise your revenue to be able to cover your expenses. But the city did, I believe they did furloughs and things like that, you know, to be able to increase their, decrease their expenses and also start increasing reserves and all that. So, the recommendation was that, you know, the way to raise revenue is to increase your user rate, so that would be, you know, your, anything related to, like, I don't know, like for all the, the programming, I guess, like building, planning, police, fire, in the general fund, and then water, wastewater, you have your user rate. So, it's just, start looking into, you know, conduct a fee study, and the fee study will tell you that there's, there's rates that are low, that you're not covering, because you're allowed to cover what it costs to provide that service. And what's happening here is that there's a lot of fees that are not covering the cost of the service. So, the recommendation was move forward with a user fee study and raise your rates. And that was, the last time that there was a rate increase was in two thousand and nine, I believe. So, it's been a while, and they saw that need to start looking into that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let me ask, councilmember Calderon, does he have any more comment without a motion?
I already have a motion on the floor, and I'd like for it to be respected.
So, no, no other comments?
No other comment, then I already said, this is my third time, motion to approve the budget.
I haven't asked for a motion, councilmember Calderon, we're still discussing.
You should acknowledge me that you haven't, so I'm.
Excuse me, don't speak from the public. Don't speak from the public. Thank you. So, you don't have a second, councilmember Calderon, so there was no roll call, we're still discussing.
No, let's go to roll call.
Okay, so, you had another comment, you said?
For city manager and finance, there's many ways to work with a budget, right? And we keep talking about water rate increases, but my question is, if we were able to get back our JPIA and not have to put money towards our unfunded liabilities, so being self-insured, could that money be freed up and used for anything else, because it's coming from the general fund, correct?
So, it's an allocation per FTE, so it only, it comes from the general fund, but then it also comes from water, wastewater, because it's per FT and their allocations, but yes, we would be able to put that money back.
Yeah, and across the board, right? So, like if council, if we were able to get healthy and get insured again, and then also work something out with the Calpers, that money could be used to inject into the departments that need it most, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
How long would that take?
Do we know?
Well, I know that we talked about it, I'm Maribel myself, but we haven't had time to look into it, so I think we would have a better idea once we talk to, say, CJPIA and, because I'm not exactly sure what was the problem, I know that we lost it, that is, that's as far as I know, and so we need to do some research and, but I'm guessing it would take maybe like, this is just a guess, but maybe like three months, more or less, to be able to get to that point.
All right, thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment on the, when it was mentioned about the privatization of the water. I don't, I don't necessarily agree that privatizing water services will bring a higher cost to the citizens, because many times, private companies, you know, they're not gonna be paying to retirement benefits, they don't have to pay, you know, the prevailing wages, and a lot of times also, since they have more money, they have, sometimes can build better facilities where their operational costs are less, so they can transfer those savings to the customer. So, that's not necessarily factual, that's why we would study it, study if it would be, you know, because we have to remember that we're here, everybody here, all five of us here, represent the citizens. So, we have to look out for what's in the best interest, always, of our citizens. And that's all I have to say, anybody else? Okay, councilmember Calderon, would you like to make a motion?
I motion to approve this budget as written.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Norikumo.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Thailand.
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon.
Yes.
Councilmember Marcus.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Without anything else, do you have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Roll call.
Mayor Norikumo.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Thailand.
Yes.
Councilmember Marcus.
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon.
Yes.
Passes. Okay, thank you, meeting adjourned at three oh eight PM.